Call the meeting order, I'd like to welcome everyone to the February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular scheduled Port Clinton City Council meeting, and the Linda Hartlove, Council members, please stand at the Court of Allegiance, Lord's Prayer, and all the silence for the serving of the check here.
To the fight of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and give us such transgressors as we do their trespassings, and with this our temptation, through the first sinners, for that he came in, God, and glory, forever and ever.
Thank you, you may be seated. The other person, please call the roll. Jeff Gilman, present. Margaret Phillips, present. Richard Morgan, here. Kelly Gangel, here. Pat Mobus, excused. Jerry Trowell, present. Kathy King, present. Thank you. Council, you're free to receive the January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes. Do I motion approve the minutes? And President, I move to approve the January twenty-fourth, January minutes. Thank you, I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Let me just, um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carries, the minutes are approved, thank you. The Chair notes that certification has been made regarding compliance with the rules and notifications of this meeting. We do have guest presenters this evening, and Mr. Mayor, would you like to introduce them?
Thank you, Madam President. Council, and those here in attendance tonight, believe it or not, one thousand four hundred and five days ago, myself, the then Safety Service Director and representatives of Pogomar Design Group, met in this, what used to be the small conference room right behind City Council chambers here, and we started discussing a concept about improving our city's infrastructure. And over those times, that timeframe, it's kind of evolved into what they're going to talk to you about tonight, the functionality of that whole thing. And when we started, it was one giant project, and after some discussions in the community and some research by Pogomar and others, it turned into two projects, Plan A, Plan B, above ground, below ground. And then, as we moved on, we added some issues with Lake Shore Drive, so it was Plan A, Plan B, and Lake Shore Drive. And now today, it's turned into Plan A one, Plan B, Plan A two, Lake Shore Drive, and oh yeah, Ottawa County's going to do a project the same time we are through the city of Port Clinton. So it's been a pretty involved process. We've talked with numerous, numerous funding sources, I think it's somewhere in the twenties. Some were not as successful as others, but we were able to secure some funds through the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, ODOT, the federal earmarks, and the soon-to-be U.S. Department of Agriculture. We've been in negotiations with them as well to fund the entire project. All along, we've had to deal with a global pandemic, which meant social distancing meant that we couldn't meet inside, we had to meet in park pavilions on sunny days, we had to do conference calls, some offices and federal government agencies were closed, people were working from home. We've had dozens of meetings in person and virtual, several field trips to a variety of locations, including our favorite restaurant in Bowling Green. Multiple pieces of legislation that council has reviewed and, to my, best of my knowledge, have all passed unanimously, hundreds of decisions that have been put before us that sometimes drive us, drive us crazy, and countless hurdles, all with one goal in mind, to get FLYP, the forward-looking infrastructure project, underway. But all of that stuff aside, that's what we're supposed to do as elected officials. And it's been, it's been a pleasure, for me anyways, personally, following the ups and downs and how this whole thing has, has evolved to get us here today, because today is, is very, very exciting. A few weeks ago, you took action to allow us to get some funding things, which really set the ball rolling and made these guys that you're about to meet very, very busy. Today, the representatives from Pogomar Design Group, and I'll let them introduce themselves, are going to talk to you about Phase One A, which is, or Phase A one, the below-ground first part, which will begin here in just a few short weeks, and I'm very, very excited that they're here and we're in a position to get this, to get this ball rolling. Gentlemen, I'll let, let you guys introduce yourselves and get going, unless you have anything else to add at this point.
I'll go first, I'm Greg, till I can, and just want to, and again, to my left is Doug Newser, to Doug's left is Bob Desmond. I just wanted to maybe just add just a few real simple comments to what the mayor added, and I'm going to, really Doug and Bob are going to talk to you more about the details or specifics, but as, as the mayor kind of went through the history of this project, one of the things that, I can't believe I'm actually going to correct the mayor, but I guess I'm going to, but not correct, but add, add, not the first time, is, is that through all of that path that he talked about, we traveled is, it was the, the support and action by council the whole way through, from the very beginning, just as the mayor said that we were in this small conference room like fourteen hundred days ago, and he was on board. Well, I remember shortly after that, within the, maybe what, less than two or three weeks after that, we were sitting down with individual members of council talking about all of this. And I understand that there's new council folks here today, but the whole way through, it's been this sense of unity. We went, it was the summer of twenty nineteen, because I remember it was before COVID, and we did those public meetings, and many of you as council were there, and originally, we, if I, you know, for those who were at the very beginning, the thought was this infrastructure charge would potentially put that to the vote of the public, and through that, through your support, it was no, just, let's just go do it. And so, I think the, we're here today because of the consensus that's been in the community, but I think a lot of that consensus was really fed off of your support as council, and I mean, the reality is, we wouldn't be here today if that unity and that consensus wasn't here, so I, so don't sell yourself short. Obviously, you know, I understand the mayor, the Safety Service Director, that's their job is to be on the front lines of this, but, but you have been, you know, by just the last action where you did a few weeks of spending periods, once again, you guys were right there and did your part, so, and he said, this is, and I think as I actually said to a couple of council folks before today, he, again, this is the largest, most complicated project in the history of the city, so, and this is, as the mayor said, you know, we've obviously had some hurdles along the way that no one saw, but we're, we're here, we're there, you know, we got here, and it is, it is a good day, and so we're looking forward to it, but we really appreciate your all's support. Every time we've been here, we've been welcomed, and so we very much appreciate that, so. I want to turn this over to Doug and Bob, and let them kind of give you some more specific, we're going to talk about overviews of both projects, talk about timelines, and go from there. And then, obviously, answer any questions that any of you have.
I'll, I'll start with your below-ground project, just a brief update on that. You know, that, that's the part of the, of the three projects, four projects that we're doing for you that we began with, and it has been the most difficult. I think we've seen the most plan changes along the way, working with your administration and staff. Numerous water lines have been moved from this location over to this location, and I do give them tremendous credit, they have not really caused much coke screep in the, creep, scope creep. In other words, the project has not gotten larger as far as total linear footage of improvements that we're doing below ground, so we've kept a very close eye on that, but it has led to delays just in the design, additional field work that needed to be done. We were doing fairly well with the plan design, and then we weren't doing so well with the funding sources that we were attempting to go after. It wasn't until, I don't think, late, late last year, late, late last year, that we finally came upon the Army Corps funding sources for their five ninety-four funds. That ended up being a two million dollar grant for the city, very much appreciated, but that also had its own schedule attached to it that we found out about. Their schedule originally had us doing all their paperwork and completing it towards the end of December, beginning of January. There were some things that did not happen on their side as quickly as they probably should have. They were asking the city to sign a number of letters, and all of these letters seemed to point back to what they called their partnership agreement with the city. Then, their, the letters were saying that the city had read this agreement and was in agreement with it, you know, had no, no objections to it. It wasn't until about two weeks ago, I think, two and a half weeks ago, that, that partnership agreement was finally presented in draft form, no less. So we, we were able to make some comments on that, send it back to Army Corps, have not heard back from them, if they're accepting of the few comments that we'd made, but we don't believe any of them were major. Their schedule, if we were originally following it, we'd be advertising the underground project probably in another month or two, but because of that setback with the paperwork, I, I think it'll probably be delayed for receipt of bids maybe until September or October of this year. Now, that's just that funding source. So, as we were finishing up with that, I believe you're aware, we went after the federal capital money, the earmark funds, and you were very successful with that as well. We have not had formal discussions with U.S. EPA, that's going to be administering the funding sources from the feds. That meeting has been set up by Gabe for this Friday, so that'll probably be our first taste of what their requirements are going to be, and if there'll be any additional setbacks due to that funding source that you have. So that's kind of where your underground project stands right now, we still have not submitted to EPA, but I believe the plans are getting very close to being able to do that, and then sitting down with both your sanitary and your water and superintendents for final review of those. I guess during all that course of time and the delays with the water and sewer project, that's when administration started talking to us last fall about possibly splitting your above-ground into two phases, and we are just about ready to submit to the funding sources for the final plans and the contract documents for that. Bob Desmond has been our project manager on that since about November, I think, now, getting the, the first phases in order, so I'll let Bob update you on that project, unless you have any questions about the, the below-ground portion.
Since it's, you're, you're saying September, October, will that start date of that into twenty-four, or do you see that starting yet in twenty-three?
It's probably going to be close. When I said September, that's about when we would advertise, we'll probably give, give it on thirty days to advertise. I believe between the time we receive bids and then the time we sign contracts, it's probably going to be a month to a month and a half.
Right.
Depending on material delays and availability, it could be the beginning of the year.
But, but it'll still happen in the winter, because underground, you can do that in the winter.
That's when I prefer to do underground work, yes.
Right.
Yeah, so we're, we're very hopeful, but again, we'll, we'll have more information, I think, after our meeting Friday.
You know, Jerry, just to add to what Doug said, the other thing, again, in, in our world, when you, when you're pursuing funding, these two funding sources that you got regarding the underground, those were, those were federal programs, and the reason I want to differentiate that versus the state of Ohio, because when you pursue federal work and get, or pursue federal funding, again, not a shock, there's just so much more red tape that comes with that, this is state of Ohio money, it would be, it would be a shorter window in terms of all the administrative stuff, so, as I said, the, the good news is, you, again, I think over five million dollars in grant money.
Right.
Of course, the bad news is, it comes with a hunk of red tape, which impacts our schedule.
Right, right, of course. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I can, the above-ground work, I just want to say first off, thanks for having us, we do appreciate being here, and this is probably the most exciting part, because everybody gets to see new asphalt down. So, like Doug and everybody else has said, the above-ground work got split up into two phases to hopefully push out some asphalt ahead of the underground utility work, and we, we broke up the phases, I don't want to say we, we looked at the entire city and where we could resurface things compared to where we were doing the underground work, and we kind of, we grouped streets where there was no underground work being done or near it to put into Phase One A of the resurfacing, that way those roads would not get destroyed during the underground work. So if, do you want to go to the next slide, Tracy?
Okay. So this, this map kind of gives you an idea of the scope and how large all these projects are together. Yep, sure.
Before I get too far, why is Fremont Road not done?
Fremont Road, I reading that we're doing waterline work along Fremont Road, and...
Oh, okay, it's surrounded by, or, okay, I know.
Yeah, our waterline will probably mostly be outside the pavement along that street. We also believe that that street's eligible for some resurfacing money coming into the city, so we kind of left that off as far as resurfacing or as far as above-ground work or below-ground work.
Great, thank you.
Wasn't necessarily included.
Thank you, sorry to interrupt.
No, you're fine, and I, if anybody does have questions during this, feel free to jump in and ask a question, I don't mind that at all. So as, as I was saying, we broke up the phases into two, and we looked at different ways we could pave certain roads without destroying them later with the underground work. So on this map, all of the roadways in green are for Phase One, that will begin hopefully here, shovels in the ground in the middle of May, we're, we're looking at. So, this kind of shows you how we broke it up and how we kind of grouped certain areas. So for example, up in the northwest corner of Port Clinton, all those roads didn't have any utility work, so we decided to put those in Phase One, because there was no utility work in the area. Similar to the southern portion of Port Clinton, there's no utility work in this area. So, that's the reasoning behind choosing those roads to go first. All of the red is the underground work, so you can see all the blue roads, which is Phase, I guess, One B of the above-ground work, it's kind of intermingled with the underground work. So that's why those roads will be going in second after the underground work is completed. Yep, sure.
And maybe explain this, but I think I understood it. So Phase One A is the green things?
Yep.
And will those all be done in twenty-three? How long does that take?
Oh, we're estimating about three months.
Okay, and is it all asphalt, or are we looking at other surfaces?
All asphalt.
All asphalt.
Yep.
Okay, and then, the red ones are the, the big ones, underground and above-ground. The blue ones, okay, so first we do Phase A one, which is all the green stuff.
Right.
And then, a year from now, at least, we'll do all the red stuff.
Correct.
And that's the stuff that needs all the stuff underneath it, that's B. And then when that's all done, then we do the red ones and the blue ones.
Correct.
And we can't do the blue ones, because even though the water, the stuff isn't done underneath it, it may be impacted by that? I'm not sure I understand that.
The, the trucks that are using haul routes for all of their stone and things, material to bring in and out of all these red roads, they may drive up those blue roads and destroy those roads, so we didn't want to push those into Phase One and have them get destroyed during the underground work.
And this is a minor question, but why is the intersection of Jefferson and Thames not being done? It's this little area of gray in the sea of green there, is there a reason for that?
Because that's actually brand-new concrete.
That is brand-new?
Yeah, yep, and I didn't, I didn't want to have to touch it if I didn't have to, because it looks really good.
Okay, fair enough.
So that was the reason for that.
Okay, thank you, that's all for now.
Yep, not a problem. And then one last thing on this map, the roadways in yellow will be alternate bids for the Phase One A portion of the project, and the reason we're using alternate bids for Phase One A is to maximize your levy money that everybody passed, I believe, was it last year, two years ago?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, okay, two years. Two years ago? So we wanted to maximize that money as much as possible, so the, the reasoning behind having alternates is we can add those roads into the project to maximize the money, depending on if the bids come in low, we can add those roads in and get up to a certain number that we want to get up to without, you know, having, without going over and having a change in scope and going through all that process.
Again, I'm sorry, but when you say alternate bids, when you put the bids out, which is relatively soon, I understand.
Yep.
Whoever wins that is going to do all the green stuff.
Correct.
Okay, and they may or may not do the yellow stuff, depending whether their bid matches, and, again, I didn't understand why you picked those particular ones for yellow. I mean, there's how many miles of roads that you picked, about a fourth of them to put alternate bid, is it, I'm not sure why you picked those certain ones.
So, I, I chose the bottom, or I guess, I should say the bottom, the southern west corner of town for the alternates, and then I also chose this area here on the eastern side of town as alternates, because my estimates for those roadways came down to a number that we were trying to get to. So that, that's the reason, I wanted to group those roads together as an alternate. Should the bids come in low enough, we can add all those roads in at one time, instead of trying to pick and piece, you know, different roads across the city. So that, that's the reasoning for that, and hopefully that, I explained that as good enough.
Maybe just to add, so if the bids come in low enough, we want to be able to automatically plug in some roads right away, I mean, that would, that would, go ahead and do it.
So, at this point, we're planning the red stuff being done in twenty-three, the blue stuff probably not until twenty-four, I'm sorry, no, the green stuff in twenty-three, the red stuff in twenty-four, the blue stuff after twenty-four, could be twenty-five, could be twenty-six, and the yellow stuff could be done in twenty-three, depending on what the bids are.
Correct, yep.
But we're still looking at twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six to get this done.
Correct.
All right, fair enough.
Yep. And I, I do have a schedule kind of later on in the presentation on how things are going to work with all the phases, so that should maybe help out a little bit.
Maybe I jumped the gun a little.
No, no, you're, you're fine, you're fine.
And I have a question, is everything going to be asphalt? Like, we've got brick, we've got concrete, everything is all going to be uniform throughout the city?
Yep, everything will be asphalt, all the concrete roads will be milled down and have asphalt put on top of it. So yeah, every, everything should be black by the time we're done.
It'll look uniform and not a patchwork of?
Correct, yep.
One other thing to point out on the alternates, we, we started doing a bit more in-depth analysis on your revenues and current costs for all of your projects, and this was after you had secured or were promised earmark money, money, and the five ninety-four money from Army Corps. With the increase in prices, your resurfacing project is probably maybe right at your budget. Originally, when we had planned this, we, I think, had about a ten to fifteen percent cushion in there, and that's pretty much gone by the wayside, so we are very nervous about pricing. It is starting to come down a little bit, and it, we could possibly be in a better position cost-wise if we delayed Phase One A and did it all after the water and sewer project was finished, but we started to look at the alternates and thought, okay, you have done very well in the water and sewer side in your grant, grant funds that you received. That project is in pretty good shape, it's actually got probably a surplus from what we originally had anticipated as cushion, as a cushion. So in case we do have problems with the, the asphalt prices, we considered some of these alternate streets, they were originally identified for waterline replacements, and as I mentioned before, in working with the staff, they decided this water line's worse, let's do this one instead of this one. So some of these alternate streets, they could potentially then become water and sewer projects under that funding source to get them resurfaced eventually, so that's the other reasoning behind the, the alternate bids, or, or one of the other reasons that we opted to take the alternates.
I have one more question, I'm sorry. It's pretty bare, backing off of hers, and I have to ask it, I know the answer, but I have to ask it. What I, I don't know when they did Sixth Street, I moved back into town about fifteen, and it was brand-new then. Okay, now, seven, eight years later, it's still pretty good, but it's not as good as it was, and at some point, by fifteen years from now, it's going to be resurfaced. I hate to say the word brick, but the brick streets have lasted forever. Yeah, they get a swale on them sometimes, but they never, I mean, there's brick streets that are a hundred years old here, and they're still fine. Give me a reason why we don't even consider brick. I'm not saying we should, I'm a layman here, I'm not an engineer, but, and I see you guys smiling, I mean, because you've heard this question before, apparently, why don't we use brick?
I have not heard why we don't do more brick streets, other than the cost. It is pretty expensive, most of the brick streets have gone by the wayside because maintenance crews don't like to keep them up, when they get those dips in them, they're hard to repair. That's about the only reasoning that I can give to you for, you know, not replacing a brick street with a brick street or putting in more brick streets.
I mean, I understand this more upfront, I'm not sure why, it'd be very labor-intensive, I know, but, boy, they last, they last forever. In the town I used to live in, they had one brick street, and they did some sewer work in there, tore it up, I thought, that's a shame, because that's going to have a patch there. I came back the next day, and you couldn't see, because they just put the bricks back in, it was like new, you know, it just seemed to make so much sense, but I guess economically, it's just too much money is basically it.
Yeah, and then, you know, with, with waterline breaks especially underneath a, a brick street, they want to get to that waterline as quickly as they can, so they probably end up cutting through the brick rather than pulling it out and then putting it back in, and in this day and age, no one has time to, usually in most municipalities, you know, the, the staff is probably understaffed in a lot of cases and, and overworked, and they don't have time to go back and then make the repairs that those brick streets require to get them to hold, continue to hold up. So a lot of times, they'll cut them out, and then they'll fill them back in with concrete or asphalt, and then you start to get wheel patches on your streets.
Yeah, okay, I'll throw in a test, any more questions? Okay, thank you.
No, no, more questions, better.
Okay, then Lake Shore Drive, what's, see, that's not scheduled for repaving, I know we're rebuilding it, is that going to be part of these phases at all, or?
Yeah, Lake Shore Drive is kind of its own separate project, for the most part, we are putting new waterline down there as part of the underground. We had a couple of different ideas and proposals on the table for that, you know, you are, we are working on a revetment replacement along the entire length. As part of that whole process, we went through a couple of different ideas, one was actually to physically move that pavement landward a few feet. The intent there was to try and keep the revetment out of the lake, because that has its own environmental and, and land occupation issue. So what we ended up with there, you have a million dollars in ODOT money for that, and then we have a potential source from the Biden money that came about a couple of years ago, we're waiting for a grant project there that we think fits this revetment to a T, but it hasn't been released yet for applications. As far as the pavement, that is, of course, State Route one sixty-three coming into the city, so it's eligible for urban, urban paving money from ODOT, so we're not planning to do any resurfacing on that, we believe that probably within three to four years, it might be up as part of ODOT's work on, on street maintenance or pavement maintenance for you.
These guys are also really good at solving rukes cubes.
Yes.
I unpeel the sticky.
I thought I wouldn't ask anymore, but the word you kept saying, revetment?
Revetment.
How's that spelled?
R-E-V-E.
T, T, N, T. And, and I'm not sure, I understand what it means, I'm sorry, I should, but I don't.
Okay, so when you drive down Lake Shore Drive along the, the lake, you see those large boulders?
Correct.
Chunks of concrete, other debris in there that's intended to keep the lake from washing the, the land and then the pavement away. What we're going to be doing is removing all of those, all of that rock and rubble, and then, if you recall where the Moose Lodge was, and they have very well designed, in my opinion, revetment that protects that property.
It's basically a wall, right?
It's, it's armoring the storm, or the shoreline, the stone, it's large stone.
Large stone that'll slope down into the lake. We're going to be a little bit steeper than the revetment you might see at the Moose property, and this is going to be large stone, the smallest stone that we'll have is probably going to be two to three tons, and then the largest would be around five tons, so they're going to be pretty So they're gonna be pretty good size. They'll be larger than any of your segmented desks, most likely.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, we can go to the next slide, Tracy. So I just wanted to show this slide to show everybody what will be happening first in the first phase compared to the rest of the city. So it's just a copy of the previous page without the undergrounds and without Phase Two. So if anybody has any questions on this.
If the young ones don't make it into Phase One, like, when do those happen then? Are those, are they still gonna happen maybe before the underground or...
Like Doug said, we, the city may want to put a new waterline down. Some of those roads were eligible for a waterline. And then they decided to go with a waterline that was in worse condition. So that may be eligible for the Phase One or Phase Two underground project. So, but we're hoping to put them in with Phase One if we can, depending on how big it's coming.
We'll also shift whatever we can to Phase Two. Then the other option, we're also, have made administration aware of it and probably will plan for some of your streets that are in the worst condition of what we've identified. We might pull those out as individual street projects in the future and go after some funding sources to completely reconstruct rather than to actually just resurface. So they will end up being more expensive, but when we get to reconstruction, we have a better opportunity to see some other grant funds for streets. Resurfacing projects don't really bode real well for grant funding, especially when you're doing as many at one time as you're doing.
Okay, we'll go to the next slide. So these are the probable costs that we have come up with for the Phase One resurfacing and Phase Two resurfacing, which will be after the underground project. So our limit with your guys' levy is about eight point nine million. And as you can see here, we are, we're very close to that mark. These numbers do not include the alternates. These are strictly just the blue colors and the green colors. So that is another reasoning. We had to take out some roads from Phase One to stay underneath that eight point nine million dollar number. Are there any questions on this?
Can you talk briefly on how you reached those numbers? I know, you know, there's been eight interest rate hikes over the past year. There's been inflation. You base these numbers off of real-world projects that you've dealt with and conversations you've had with contractors in today's world, with today's money?
Yes. So about a couple of months ago, before we started moving roads into the alternates, all these roads were in Phase One and we were looking at prices. And we reached out to one of the contractors because the market has been fluctuating so much to where we can't really get a hold on it. So I sent him rough numbers of the length of road that we want to do, as well as what we want to do with each road, put down asphalt everywhere, mill each road. And he came back to me with significantly higher numbers than what I had planned on three months ago. So after getting those numbers, plugging them in for each road and all of our quantities, we actually were over that eight point nine million dollar number. So that's when I had to go back and try to take some roads out that may be able to get done with the undergrounds or get done with Phase Two. And hopefully, the prices will actually come down by the time Phase Two resurfacing happens. So that's the general reasoning for the prices. We do have a fourteen percent inflation for the next two years for Phase Two since that will also not start until about 2025. So we did want to add that in there, should inflation keep going at the rate it's going. But hopefully, it does slow down and doesn't make it up to that fourteen percent mark. I think that's all I have to say for the construction cost. Does anybody have any questions about the construction cost? Okay. So this is the schedule we've been looking at, like Doug said and the mayor said. Our schedules are, have been bouncing around quite a bit with different funding sources. But I think we have a good, good date on when we can start Phase One resurfacing. So our plan is, we have to get a notice out to the public this week, which has to go for thirty days before we can advertise. So our advertising date is scheduled for March fifteenth. And that will advertise for roughly three weeks. Then we will get the bids. We will recommend a contractor for the city to go with and hopefully award a bid at the, our April eleventh council meeting. Once that's complete, it typically takes about a month to get contracts in order, get the contractor to order his materials, and do any miscellaneous things in between getting awarded and actually putting shovels in the ground. So we're anticipating a start date of May fifteenth. And like I said, we are estimating it to take about three months. So it should be done by the end of 2023. And then, as Doug said, we plan on going out to advertise for the underground projects in the fall of 2023. So it should be a continuous construction season for you guys for the next three or four years at least. Which is a good thing. So hopefully, everybody in the city will be happy with what's going on and as many people can have as new roads as possible at the end of all these projects. Is there any questions on schedule? Okay.
You know, one, I was just, as we're going through this, I was just thinking, because I know funny's the right word, but we, on the, on the Project A, you know, as we're looking at our funding sources, and we were, for a number of months, we were looking at what's called the State Infrastructure Bank to, you know, to be a loan through them and then you pay it back to your street buddy. And so we were, and we're kind of talking about it through the fall. And then we found out, I think, was it right about Christmas time or somewhere in there? And I think the State Infrastructure Bank is a division of ODOT. It's been, I guess they've been having a program for twenty-five plus years. So we learned either right after Christmas or something that this was our plan to do this. And so they, and so they told us that for the second time in their history, they ran out of money. They had no money. And so, and so we fortunately, you know, collectively, you know, ourselves and Gabe and Mike and Tracy, we all kind of got together, we came up with Plan B. And so we, you know, obviously, we weathered that storm. But it's just kind of another, like, kind of the way this project's been, it's just always been a new twist or turn around every corner. And we just, I just thought we were like, you know, when they told us they ran out of money, as the state of Ohio, I think you're running out of money. And, but they just had a lot of loans they let, they gave out through the course of the last year or so. And, you know, unfortunately, they didn't really tell, they would've told us that upfront. It was, okay, but they, you know, they were talking along the way. And then we probably submitted a formal application. That's when they indicated to us that they're out of money. Anyway.
Are they gonna reimburse it again or will they?
Well, they're talking about, so it's a revolving loan. So when the money's paid back, then they'll pay it back in. But we were asking for over four million dollars. And so the time for that repayment, it just, it just wasn't gonna work.
Right.
And, but anyway, fortunately, again, happy ending. We, again, we were able to put together Plan B, Plan B's in place. And as Bob said, we'll keep a little bit next March, or next month, rather.
Alright, that's all you have to say?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Yeah, gentlemen, thank you very much for all the work you've done over the past couple of years.
It's been a pleasure.
You can't believe how, all the different conversations we've had. I'll just put it at that. It's, it's, it's been neat from the inside to watch this all evolve over the past fourteen-hundred-five days. And I can't wait for the next three thousand days to be over. Tracy's gonna give away a cellphone, by the way, if they want it.
Okay, we appreciate you coming and giving me a presentation and then giving us a little diagram. So, would be great. Questions? If you would like to steal more, you're welcome to. But you can leave if you'd like the rest of your evening.
Oh, so gracious. Thank you. So hopefully, we will be back in a couple, you know, in maybe what, six weeks or so to award some bids? And that will be a good thing for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
Okay, we don't have any further comments. But move on to executive officers and boards.
Thank you.
First, let me start by saying that the finance committee meeting after tonight's meeting is canceled for this evening. We have three new ordinances and resolutions. Five twenty-three, five dash twenty-three, there's no committee that can go for three readings. Six dash twenty-three, no committee that can go for full three readings. Resolution twenty-three dash two, no committee. But administration has asked that be passed this evening on its first read for time-sensitive nature. Everyone remember about filling out your ethics by the deadline date and doing your public records training, sunshine law training, if you have not done so. And I just have a first question. Everyone, a happy Valentine's Day. Move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening again, everyone. I just wanna thank all of those that participated in the State of the City discussions. There were five at the Port Clinton High School in Megan Hills government class, one at the fire station, and one at the Ottawa County Family Advocacy Center. Obviously, Tracy, the department supervisors who provided a lot of the information and were critical in the discussions that we had. All those that attended, members of council, other elected officials, those from the community, and of course, my parents who did a lot of the background legwork in this whole thing. One of the questions I know Ms. Ostermer's been asked, and I've been asked a few times, is, is this gonna be on, on the city's website? Those of you in this room that were in attendance know this. And I'm just saying this for those watching and listening on the interweb. It wasn't the traditional State of the City address where I stood up and spoke for an hour and everybody went home. It was a participation-type event. And right now, in front of the members of council, there's eighteen pages, including five hundred and forty topics, words, issues, whatever you wanna call it, facing the city. And that was the State of the City address. How we selected those, we'll just run through one of these real quick. Ms. Phillips, would you mind picking a number, one to eighteen?
Ten.
Ten? This is Ostermer before? Yep, you have a dice in front of you. Would you mind rolling that and giving out the letter?
A.
Ten, A. Mrs. Gangl, pick a number one to ten.
Seven.
Seven? So if you can turn to page ten in your printout, those are in the lower right-hand corner, I believe. The columns are labeled A, B, and C. Look for column A, and then count the seventh word down.
P.C. Lions Club.
P.C. Lions Club. We would talk about the P.C. Lions Club and other service organizations in the community, the role they play. Although Lions Club wasn't selected, and by the way, in the seven different times we did this, only once did a word repeat itself. But we talked about the, you know, the Tree Commission, Beautification Committee, the Friends of the Parks, Friends of the Cemeteries, all those organizations that contribute to the community and how they do that to make the city function. And we did that nine to ten total times. And people in the, in the crowd participated. I, it would be difficult with one camera to capture the voices and the faces and everything. And actually, before the State of the City address, approached a fellow I know here in town who's in the video production business and explained what we were going to do. And with the sound equipment that was needed and the cameras, it just became impractical to record this year's State of the City address. And besides, all seven of them were different. So that's why, if anyone asks you, that's why you won't find it on the, on the internet. But you can certainly present anyone you'd like with the eighteen pages and say, here's the State of the City address, enjoy, and go from there. On another note, the 2023 Ottawa County Improvement Corporation Business and Industry Awards will take place on Thursday, March sixteenth, at Gideon Owen. As you all know, I'll be out of town. I've asked anyone in this room that would like to attend, please contact Ms. Ostermer to make arrangements to attend that meeting and represent the city of Port Clinton. From our utility department, I'd like to announce that we now have a new credit card processing machine, which will be more efficient for the citizens of Port Clinton. It'll give those in-house that come in to pay their bills the ability to swipe, tap, you know, chip, and dunk, whatever that is in the credit card business, to pay their water and sewer bills. In the very near future, over the next couple of months, the anticipation of adding Google and Apple Pay will also be, will also be an option. On your utility bill, there's some information you will need in order to make a payment over the phone. First of all, you would call one eight eight eight, three one nine, fifty-nine twenty-six. Again, eight eight eight, three one nine, fifty-nine twenty-six. You'll need your account number and your CID number. Your account number and CID, both of those are printed on your water bill. If you have any questions, please call the city hall number, four one nine, seven three four, five five two two, seven three four, five five two two, extension three. That'll put you in contact with the water department. They can walk you through the processes if you choose to pay your water sewer bill by credit card. Just before this meeting, we had our Tree Commission in the new conference room next door. And Mr. Holman announced to all of us that for the thirty-fourth year in a row, Port Clinton has been designated a Tree City USA. So I think that's absolutely wonderful. A lot of that time has been under Mr. Holman's leadership as Tree Commissioner. Mr. Holman, Mr. Toroli, and Mr. Demakis are going to represent the city at a conference in Wabakanaeta, is that where?
Wasion.
Wasion, Wasion, in March. So thank all the members of the Tree Commission for their hard work. Mark your calendars. The Third Annual P.C. Day at Fifth Third Field is set for Sunday, August twentieth. A Sunday, August twentieth. The Jet Express will come out with their package. The Mud Hens will come out with their package. Given a couple of weeks, we'll make more announcements as those ticket options are made available. But again, it's gonna be Sunday, the twentieth of August. And finally, like everything else in the world, fireworks costs have gone up. Our, yeah, our show last year was twelve thousand. It's now sixteen thousand for the same, for the same episode or same level. The fireworks committee has created a fundraiser called Coins for Kabooms. And it's a simple premise. There are currently four participating restaurants in the Port Clinton area. A La Carte, A La Carte After Hours, Fast Eddys, and Mr. Ed's. And there are several others that are trying to figure out their point-of-sale systems. The gist of the whole thing is, when you get your bill, you tell your server to round up to the next dollar. And those additional coins will then go into a kitty to help fund the Fourth of July fireworks. And I'll tell you, in just one of those restaurants I mentioned, in the first two weeks, they generated about two hundred dollars. So people are, in the community are participating. It was the committee's thought that this is, rather than have a raffle and you need to know Mike Snyder or Debbie Tester or Amy Drummer to buy your tickets, this is an opportunity for second homeowners that may not know us to go into a restaurant that they go to anyways, see the little sign on the table and say, hey, I wanna help out. And thus far, that is happening. It has been suggested, if you recall, those can't, on camera can't see me, but I've been bald for the past nine months. Bauman Automotive last year paid six thousand, six hundred dollars for the right to shave my head with that money going to the Fourth of July fireworks campaign. It's been suggested, not by anyone on the committee, but a couple people in the community, that councils should take up the challenge and, and put their hair on the line for the highest bidder to shave, to shave their head. Just gonna throw that out there for discussion. I'll, I'll see, see what happens there.
One, two, three, six?
Seven people, you know? And we'll throw, we'll... Seven people, you know? And we'll throw, we'll throw in the president. Did, did, Jerry, you want to throw your hair out there for the largest?
There is no hair, huh?
Well, think about it, think about it, and we'll get back to you at a later date. Madam President, unless anyone has any other questions, that concludes my mayor's report for this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I just, those meetings were really very important. It was informative. Thank you for hosting those.
And I got to thank the supervisors. And it, it was neat to watch the meetings evolve. Each one was a little different. The participation was a little different. I think the last one was the best of all.
I think so, too.
Yeah.
And the food was pretty good.
There you go.
Thank you. Out of there, sir.
Nothing, Madam President.
Thank you. Pressure is not here. I have numbers. Thank you.
Fed tax as of February 14th, 2023, $7,177.75. Doc tax is zero.
Thank you. Law Director.
Thank you, Madam President. So we have some exciting news. We have set up a parking court that will be here at City Hall. There was one in place at a previous time, but it went by the way, so I guess. So we have set up a new parking violations court. And a hearing examiner was appointed by Mr. Colston. His name is James Finkin. So in order to be a hearing examiner in the parking violations court, you need to, you need to either be an attorney or a former police officer. Mr. Finkin has retired, is a retired police officer. So he has volunteered to do this. And we are very thankful for his volunteering. So right now, if anyone looks at the city of Port Clinton website and goes to the Law Direction, Law Directors section, there is some information on the parking violations court. And then there's some information on how to answer a parking ticket. And if somebody calls the city, they'll be referred to the website. If somebody comes in, there's also a handout that they can receive with all of this in writing over on the Police Department side. Mark Anderson is the violations clerk for the Parking Violations Bureau. He, he always has handled all the parking violations. But he will be the person to contact if anyone has any questions or would like some information. So Parking, the Parking Violations Court will be held on the first Wednesday of each month. And it will be held at 7:00 PM here at City Hall. Probably just do it right in council chambers. And whoever receives a parking ticket and would like to contest their ticket, they will receive the next available court date by Mr. Anderson. He'll be sending out information or assigning court dates as people come in. And so we'll see how it goes. Our first session will be held on March 1st at 7:00 PM. And we may have one or two participants. So we will, we'll see how it goes and we'll report what happens at our next, well, yeah, after our, after March 1st, the meeting after March 1st. That's all I have, Madam President.
Does anyone else have any questions for the law director? Move on to Supervisors' Reports. Mr. Colston.
Nothing to add. I think everything's been covered in this.
Thank you. Land Committee Report. Environment and Public Works, Mr. Trolle.
Yeah, we held our first meeting of the year tonight. We've already seen minutes.
Thank you. Services, Ms. Phillips.
Thank you, Madam President. We will be meeting before the next meeting, which is the second meeting of the month, meeting at February.
Thank you. Economic Community Development, Ms. Gangel.
We will have our meeting after the next meeting, which is the 28th. So probably 6:30, 7:00, I think.
Thank you. Move on to Correspondents'. Under Correspondents', we have the Planning Commission meeting minutes from January 12th, 2023. Architectural Review Board, meeting minutes from January 12th, 2023. So I have a motion to approve the minutes, or the Correspondents', I'm sorry, as stated.
Madam President?
Jessica Trolle.
Make a motion to approve both Correspondents'.
Thank you. I have a second. All set. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote the same as aye. Motion carries for our approved as stated. Move on to readings of ordinances and resolutions. We have none of their readings. Move on to second readings. Would the court please read by title and summary only, ordinance 1-23.
Ordinance number 1-23, an ordinance rezoning the parcel of property located at 120 Buckeye Boulevard, Port Clinton, Ohio, from an Accommodation Business District to General Business District and amending the zoning map of the city of Port Clinton.
Thank you. Does Council wish to take any action as to ordinance 1-23 this evening? Seeing none, ordinance 1-23 will be moved to its third reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting on February 28th, 2023. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only, ordinance 2-23.
Ordinance number 2-23, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to enter into a space use agreement with the Ottawa County Commissioners and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does Council wish to take any action as to ordinance 2-23 this evening? Seeing none, ordinance 2-23 will be moved to its third reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting on February 28th, 2023. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only, ordinance 3-23.
Ordinance number 3-23, an ordinance making appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Port Clinton, County of Ottawa, State of Ohio, during fiscal year ending on December 31st, 2023.
Thank you. Does Council wish to take any action as to ordinance 3-23? Seeing none, ordinance 3-23 will be moved to its third reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting on February 28th, 2023. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only, Resolution 23-1.
Resolution 23-1, a resolution authorizing the sale of personal property by internet auction.
Does Council wish to take any action as to Resolution 23-1 this evening? Seeing none, Resolution 23-1 will move to its third reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting on February 28th, 2023. Move on to first readings. Please read by title and summary only, ordinance 5-23.
Ordinance number 5-23, an ordinance authorizing the city of Port Clinton to participate in an ODOT cooperative purchasing program, including the Winter Road Salt Contract, and authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to execute all necessary and required documents and agreements for participation in the purchasing program and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does Council wish to take any action as to ordinance 5-23 this evening? Seeing none, ordinance 5-23 will move to its second reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting, February 28th, 2023. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only, ordinance 6-23.
Ordinance number 6-23, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the city of Port Clinton and the Ohio Navy Militia, a military unit of the State of Ohio, to grant O and M the right to dock and secure their patrolable at the city's dock on the Portage River and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does Council wish to take any action as to ordinance 6-23? Seeing none, ordinance 6-23 will be moved to its second reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting on February 28th, 2023. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only, Resolution 23-2.
Resolution 23-2, a resolution authorizing the Ottawa County Commissioners to act as a purchasing agent and governmental aggregator for a natural gas for the city of Port Clinton.
Thank you. Does Council wish to take any action as to Resolution 23-2?
Madam President?
Mr. Trolle.
Make a motion that we waive the three required readings for Resolution 23-2.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mrs. Gangel. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Trolle, seconded by Mrs. Gangel to waive the three required readings as to Resolution 23-2. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Beth Gelman?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Kathy, Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote of six to zero. The three required readings are hereby waived as to Resolution 23-2. Does Council wish to take any further action as to Resolution 23-2?
Madam President?
Mr. Trolle.
Make a motion that we adopt Resolution 23-2.
Do I have a second?
All set.
Thank you, Mrs. Gangel. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Trolle, seconded by Mrs. Gangel to adopt Resolution 23-2. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only, I'm sorry. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Kathy, Kelly Gangel?
Kathy King. I'm so sorry.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Beth Gelman?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of six to zero. Resolution 23-2 is hereby adopted. Move on to Business from the floor. Mr. Morgan?
I got a message.
Ms. Gangel?
No business, only fun. Just kidding.
This is exciting. And are we okay to share this?
Absolutely.
With anyone? That's it. Go for it.
I don't know if they'll, if you'll put this up on Facebook page or something, just to put it out there?
I suppose so.
As a product?
Sure, sure.
I mean, that way.
I did zoom in during, during the, oh, okay. And I'm sure that we'll figure out a way to get out there and make it fashionable.
Ms. Phillips?
Thank you, Madam President. What I've noticed is the Comfort Station on the park really looks nice, especially when it's not blowy, windy, snowy, sleety, all of that kind of stuff out there. And I think it would be a nice addition to heating to find someone behind a bush. You know that sign that they had up here indicating when the dates were due for the various phases? Could that be put up with that map that we were just talking about here, these two here?
I think we might be able to put the whole PowerPoint up there.
If you do, though.
I wrote them down, but I, you know, you know.
The third, you said B would start in the fall of '23. And now we know that's not true. So maybe that can be adjusted. I don't know.
And we could put out ten to fifteen.
I don't know that you want to put the dates out.
Spring, fall, any would wait.
I mean, you could do the first.
It's progressing forward.
It's changed so many times. I believe you put it out there. It's going to be gospel.
You know it's going to go for bids for this first phase. Possibly just put those, put those out. And then just as it comes for the future phases, possibly, whatever administration thinks is best. Mr. Trolle?
Yes, just, the mayor mentioned the Tree Commission, of course, the Honorable Larry Holman. But to need to thank the crews that are doing the work out there. If you guys, after our big wins, five years ago, if you would have drove around this town, you'd have seen trees down and limbs everywhere. And right around now, you don't see that. We haven't had a tree come down in a windstorm.
He says that before the windstorm.
The wind tomorrow.
Why, Jerry, why?
Everybody knock on wood.
It's early in the morning when I turn this on, Paul.
I know. But no, seriously, I'd like to thank Roger and his crew for the great job they're doing out there. And we do have high wind warnings tomorrow. But that's all, Madam President.
Thank you. Mrs. Gangel?
Oh, I just wanted to say how much I enjoyed the State of the City address that I presented to them. And, you know, I really liked that format. I think it was really wonderful.
Ms. Gelman?
Thank you, Madam President. There's always lack when I am in Port Clinton. I know we're in February and spring, winter, summer, whatever the season happens to be right now. Shameless plug for the FOPA is having a fundraiser for the Law Enforcement Memorial that they've been working on. And I happen to have tickets. And you can also get them through their website. It's Ottawa County FOPA Lodge 34. So it's happening in March. You can buy tickets for friends, family, anybody. It'll be a good time. It's a first thing go. And then Burning Snowman's coming up. Just a lot still going on in the city, a lot of good energy. And the State of the Union was great and addressed a lot of it. Nothing else, Madam President?
She just promoted me.
Seeing no further business, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, I move this August body adjourned.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Ms. Gelman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote the same as aye. Or adjourn. Thank you.